Based on population projections, this is what we need, you know, type of stuff. An high level, but that will be part of the project.
If you don't mind, since we've got you on the phone, what's, what is the difference between that high level description and within a and this low level inventory analysis? What do you do?
Well, it's really just detail, right? It's really just diving into more of the economics and, and stuff like that. The growth policy doesn't really dive into the nuts and bolts. Like if you look at housing study, you know, it's a whole on, you know, thirty, forty, fifty page document, just housing. Right? The growth policy is not going to do that. It's going to have, you know, four, five, six pages of high level census data and population projections. And then that just says, this is what we need, right? But the housing study will actually look at real, the market, real estate value. You know, it's going to look at a lot of different things, uh, incomes.
Do you actually do an inventory of the housing in the area?
Um, it depends. Some, some of them do, some of them don't. I think that's what we would look at with the agroscoping meeting, um, is to look, you know, look at that. I mean, most of the towns and housing needs are, are how existing inventories in the family. Um, that's predominant in the town. But, you know, the census data is actually surprising. The Department of Commerce and the United States Census has a lot of that data as far as what, what cities have. Uh, we can certainly talk to local state agents and stuff like that in town and see what's out there as well. And looking at, um, GIS data, right? Statewide GIS data.
That's what I can hear. We're going to have a discussion about how they can scope the same project or re-scope the project.
Okay.
Before you.
Any other comments or questions at this time?
I'm just curious, what are your definition of a single family dwelling as? So, single detached housing, so just one house.
Or like trailers or anything?
Yeah, I mean, that, that could be, that could be a trailer, it could be a house. A stick-built house, huh?
RV.
Uh, if it's in a RV park, potentially, yeah. Well, multi-family is going to be attached, so duplex, you know.
That's kind of my concern is, right now it sounds more statistical than factual. And I'm personally more, a little more about factual than statistical. So we need to figure out what we.
But, I mean, during the scoping, the scoping process, I mean, I anticipated talking through that with, with, with the city and kind of identifying exactly what you want out of it. And if we need to do that kind of level of analysis for the city, that's what we can do.
Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, we're fine.
Thanks for coming down, appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is a contract agreement to work in the railroad right-of-way that impacts the town's water system. And it's a lovely, it's a lovely, multi-page legal contract that basically says, don't break our railroad.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, the question that I wanted to pose to council is the fee that is associated with this agreement.
My free one?
No, it's, okay, let me get to my email. The, the fee for a twenty-five year agreement, which is what this is.
Okay.
Is thirteen thousand four hundred dollars. The. Thirteen, yes, thirteen thousand four hundred and the. Peter was concerned about the fact that there was no renewal, renewal fee, a renewal period. Automatic renewal or an option for, it's just this agreement is straight twenty-five year. So the other option available to the city is a perpetual agreement. And that funds the price up to twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars, so basically double. But then it's perpetual, we would not have to worry about council for twenty-five years from now. Right away agreement and, and either way, the fee could be paid from the project funds.
Um, have we ever had to decommission a well?
Not, not since these three wells have been installed. My reading of, of prior council minutes from way back indicates a variety of, you know, just several different sources of water for the city, some of which, you know, came from the ditch. So, so in the springtime, you know, water got a little cloudy until things cleared out. So at this point, we don't have any experience, to my knowledge.
Can we imagine any long-term problem with that well, that would offset the deed for a contract that might, you can? What would be, it's such a common thing.
It's one of the things that is, you know, you, you don't want to play the whatever game, but sometimes you have to. I mean, if there was a spill on the railroad tracks, that well could be toast. The other thing to keep in mind is that is also the well that runs, tends to run a little high in our, on our arsenic load. So it's never exceeded, but it is, runs, does tend to run a little high. So there is.
We don't happen to know why. Railroad contamination, river contamination, bad luck occurring.
Arsenic's naturally occurring, it reaches out from the rock.
No, I agree, that it's, that it's higher than the others, that's a question of why.
Yeah, I, I agree, but I, I mean, we don't.
Can we imagine any reason why we won't, might want to decommission that well and build another one?
No, if we were forced to, then yes.
Yeah. This is from a practical perspective. As much as I hate spending the money, it makes sense to get the perpetual lease and never have to talk to people and say forget it. But that, that's only well-spent money if, if in the course of the next twenty-five years, nothing goes wrong.
Anyone bring the crystal ball?
Yeah, okay.
So this, this really is a council decision. And the funds come from the water, which means that, you know, ultimately our ratepayers will, will pay for that perpetual agreement. Um, we don't, it doesn't have to come immediately from the city treasury.
I'm not sure that's a selling point.
It's just as a fact.
Yeah, it is.
Eventually it all runs through the city treasury. It doesn't come, like, it doesn't come from the current proceeds in the water account.
Yeah. No, my opinion is to take the permanent contract.
Is that in the form of a motion?
I don't think I'm hearing it, if there's any objections, I'm considering the idea. Can anybody think of why we should only take the twenty-five year contract? This, go back to the water tower, this is only going to get more expensive. Twenty-five years from now, it's not going to be thirteen thousand dollars, you have to have the extra five.
Twenty-six years, we will.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's, most of us will be one word together. In that case, I mean, if we, uh, sign the contract, we put the two of you, we can accept to permit access to that well.
Is there a second? A second. It's been moved and seconded to sign a perpetual lease for access to well number two in the railroad right-of-way. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion is carried. Thank you.
You can send in your welcome letter between our capitals, they do.
As I would look at the silver lining is, at least there was an option.
Yes, at least there was an option.
Yes, okay. The next item on the agenda, uh, we received no letters of interest for that open council seat. So we will continue to advertise for that. Just as a reminder, state law is pretty clear that an open seat is to be filled within thirty days. I did talk to Peter the last time that seat was opened and said, what happens if we get no letters of interest? And his response was, as long as we are actively seeking someone to fill that position in Ward One, that we're okay, basically you can't Shanghai anyone. There's no conscription. I think he likes all that space. Throw it into the table.
At this point, it's neither doing nor doing.
True.
As long as we're making a reasonable effort, the state's not hurt.
Uh, the legal council status update, uh, the requests for proposal, if you will, are due this Friday. To date, we have received one. Uh, we've had no other inquiries from what I conveyed to council last time. An attorney proposal, an attorney from Great Falls and the legal cities and towns requesting information. The animal control compliance officers officer status update is that Georgia has accepted a full-time position with another organization and her last day with us will be December twenty-seventh. So we will start advertising for that position. And in the meantime, in the, in the intervening time, Eric has volunteered to do the most critical pieces of that job. Okay. So thank you for stepping up, Eric, I appreciate that.
We, we just approved a budget amendment to make it a full time. She actually found a better duty on that.
That we budgeted for a full-time position, we did not make the position.
Was this probably a meeting when I wasn't here?
It was during the budgeting process.
No, I mean when Georgia announced her resignation.
Oh, she.
But this is new to me.
The letter she gave, the letter between last week and this.
Ah.
And she and I, she and I had talked briefly about whether to extend those hours. Right now, there isn't the compliance to fill, uh, uh, even a three-quarter time. So I, I'm, I'm just going to say at this time. Things were really busy in the Senate. Even the dogs of the city have apparently calmed down. Either that or, or neighbors are helping neighbors, which is okay too, which means we don't have dogs running at large.
Yeah, I'm like, it's a disappointed time to hear it, there, we have to find someone else.
So that's that situation. I'm moving right along.
This has been a rough fall. It's a sad encounter.
The only constant in our eyes is change. Okay. Okay, uh, the water system, we'll just continue on down that line there. Uh, we had a pre-construction meeting today with CK May representatives and RPA representative. CK May will be, uh, starting work on January thirteenth. And then expect to start their mobilization the week of January sixth, is that correct, Eric? So, um, yes, sorry, Nate.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Do you know what's, we're starting up there or are you starting here and working up that way?
They're having problems finding their butterfly valves. I, I actually thought they had all that lined up, but, uh, they're having problems finding those. But, uh, they're going to start at town. I'm actually a little bit excited about that because of the groundwater issue, which they shouldn't be able to get a lock knocked out, didn't care.
Yeah.
So.
Like hydrants and everything, is there?
Yeah, they want to start those. So they're, they, uh, um, they set a ten degree work limit, so if it's ten above, it won't work. Um, up to ten above, you know, if it falls down below that, then it won't work with the temp water then, so, but anyway, yeah.
That goes on for how long? This whole, this A to Z.
All the whole thing is not, yeah, there's excavation and all that, right?
Well, there's, there's the hybrid of valid people and then there's the actual. How long will the hybrid, does the CK May that does the hybrids, how long are they, do they need to get their projects done?
If I remember correctly, it was September eighteenth or something. So I was excited to have some arche season.
All right, no competition.
Sure nothing to go wrong with any of it.
Man, that's a good thing our priorities are correct, right?
Right.
There, if the, if the projected high temperature of the day is less than ten degrees, they won't work.
Does it, frankly, they couldn't have asked for it under winter right now with the long-term projections? Thank you for never touching the conference. They're wrong with that. I think you're pretty much.
It's actually too bad they kept this role right now.
Yeah.
Or Alvy.
We have a layer shift here. They should know that the construction company is going to contact dispatch and let them know what closures they have down there where they're working for emergency responders to be able to work around that.
Thank you. Angie, do you have any other comments?
Yeah, it was exciting to hear the shots, so.
Yeah.
There's a lot.
You were.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot that goes into it.
Absolutely. Okay. Any additional or updated information from ordinance review? Um, no, just fingers crossed that we're moving forward quickly, okay? Events committee? Um, can I ask that Doug and JB and I just finalize a date for that week?
Yeah.
Tonight, but really?
January thirteenth.
Yeah.
January thirteenth?
Yes.
Anytime that week. That should be our off week.
Should the city council, Monday, is that a Monday or?
Yeah, the thirteenth is a Monday, but, you know, if there's a better day on that week, that's a just, you know.
Tuesday is not.
That is my slowest month of the year, so if it's in y'all's court, like, whenever it's pretty nice.
I, I have nothing scheduled that week, yeah.
So it's up to you, don't predict it.
Yes, yeah, the only thing I can is Tuesday, so it could be the first day. Okay, Monday to a hawk?
Yeah, to a hawk.
To a Monday to a hawk?
Thank you, man. Okay. All right. I'm presuming no further advance of telecommunications, how about fireworks?
We weren't planning to set, you know, the date would be in January of the next meeting, but we weren't planning to set until the nineteenth at this night, just because we knew it'd be a conflict.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, no, uh, no updates on the garbage cans or the sewer ordinance? Uh, the hazard mitigation plan? So council needs to decide whether we're going to sign on and, and actively participate in a document that has put responsibilities on us, that's currently the document.
I choose to read it by the.
Okay. Okay, I did, I'll just let you know, I did read that, um, the annex B for Broadwater County that does refer back to other, other sections of the big document. Some of what I observed in, in Broadwater County annex section is what I just said. There are hazards that are identified that are, that have the city as being the responsible party to provide some mitigation to them. And some of it's the city council, some of it's the city, some of it is directed to the public works director. And as I read my comment, my question was, well, no one has contacted the city, so where did this information come from? And, and I have not yet had an opportunity to get in touch with anyone at the state or with written here at the county to ask those questions. So my presumption at this point is that it came from the two thousand sixteen mitigation plan that Mike Conkey had put together, just that carried forward. So anyway, that's where I am. I have read it and have some questions. Ultimately though, I just would remind council that right now it looks like our choices are sign on and become active participants in that create document, which has been described as a living document. So we sign on, we can start adding updates, providing updates, or we figure out how to do our own, which is possible. But I don't have an, I don't have any cost estimates.
Did we sign on in twenty sixteen about the wheels?
I don't know. That's the date on, that's the date on the plan, so I'm presuming it took, and I've heard that it took him about a year to put that together, which would have been the end of that year, but I don't know. I remember him working on it, so that's where we are with that. We do have, I guess it's more administrative at this point. Uh, as you'll recall, we had talked about the garage door out here that doesn't close properly. We have received one, one cost estimate, asked Eric to get some other cost estimates. He has gone down the list, um, everybody who deals with garage doors and no one has returned his call. So what we have is this estimate that's in front of you, which is a total of four thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars.
What the, the, what it is though, is it, it is an insulated door. So it's in the back and it's on there. And they were a little worried about fitting it in with the cinder blocks that's there. And then the other thing is, is hooking it up with the way that the ceilings drop down and everything else, they gotta do a little bit of work to the door to make it actually work, so.
Are you replacing the whole door?
Yes, sir.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Yes, we're replacing the whole door. So door, the door is not work, it's not fit to be repaired. Don't get me wrong, council soul wishes I would make it work however long. It's, it's time for a new door, so.
Is it proposed as a hazard?
Yes.
Other than.
It, it actually has the bottom, the, the bottom of the panel where the, where the hook is coming up, now the bottom of it is starting to break. So it, it is, to open it the other day, I actually had to get under it and heat hold it up, I'm sorry.
That has, um, work safety issues.
I felt Michael.
Yeah, what was that? So what do you mean?
Is it a local company?
Door Systems of Montana, out of Helena.
Oh, and they have, yeah.
It's essentially administrative, so yes. I'll make a motion that we accept the bid for the garage door in an amount of four thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars. Is there any, any meaningful discussion from council?
What vegetarian account is this coming?
This would come out of the.
All my streets and then my sewer, where they have my jetter and I have my, uh, back trailer, my back one, my skidster, so.
So it's going to hit a number of fronts.
Yeah, I'm still, I mean, I think one that happens to be. It, it didn't, we didn't allow it to be on the land.
No, but that gas tax money, that would be.
Yeah.
It has to be specific, pieces and trees and alleys.
My jetter's in there, so it, and it has, my jetter has to stay warm. So, I mean, that's a good way to use the sewer, if it's allowed.
There you go, it is. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion is carried, thank you. Okay, uh, second call for any public comment at this time? Okay. I would just remind council that I will be out of state from December twenty-ninth through January third. So anything that needs the mayor's signature, or should it be necessary to call a special meeting, that would be Angie, as council president. The. There was a question last meeting about the snow removal agreement and that basically is in perpetuity with the county. And if we have eighteen inches or more of snow.
Yep.
Are you, 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 sir, or on that committee?
I know, there wasn't anything.
It was eighteen inches.
I thought it changed.
No. Eighteen inches or more to remove the snow from city streets. And so we have.
Two inches once in the last three years.
Because that's how independent and self-reliant we all are. Anyway, it's, it's an agreement that is in perpetuity unless either par, until such time either party decides to change that. Thank you, checking on that. I did check, uh, on the, the use of the gas tax in state law, it is streets and alleys. I think Vivian, you had a question about whether side.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the sidewalk, maybe, I think waterways too, or, or not, yeah.
That is all I have tonight. Is there any, um, okay, Eric, do you have anything further?
Uh, Chris Fisher is going to be the representative for RPA down here, for the inspector of everything, to get us started. And I'm real excited about that because he worked with the, the room system, chatted with him a lot at the end of the meeting and I'm very excited to have him in our corner, so, yeah, I'm, I'm excited about that. So the other thing, uh, just mentioned to you, I mentioned, um, with the snow agreement about the old county pile coming up for sale. One thing that I neglected to think through, I don't have a good place to store that inside, um, at all. Um, so I, I'm a little worried about storing it inside because our little one, I can store inside loaded, that one I could not. So that's another thing to just throw at you.
The city owns the, the private property, right? We, we're, we're just.
Do you see what city does in the Bible? We don't have the room because we don't have the equipment.
We might rent it out to you.
Yeah.
Everything's to go.
We got a dump truck, we get all the way.
Okay. Nate, do you have anything tonight?
Yeah, how do we change it? That's, that's nuts. Maybe we're thinking eighteen inch drifts.
Maybe eighteen cent, Eric, and some put inside.
I just don't know why, I don't know how to, that's got changed.
I might as well have that.
I might know we have it then.
Angie, do you have anything tonight? JD?
Um, the League of Cities and Towns recommends that we assign an individual to represent the city at state legislature sessions if that's necessary. And, uh, I'm asking that we put on the next meeting agenda to have that selection.
Okay. All right. Vivian?
Well, um, so I'm just wondering how to proceed next with the, um, dog group stations for the, um, parks. So I talked to Eric about some placement places, because I looked at the parks and, um, yeah, we're, I'll bring it on, some good spots. Um, but I don't want it to come out of the city's budget and I think that it would be really great to give some of the local people an opportunity to sponsor, uh, two. We only need two, because I lost a park in Friday, there's an issue there with contracts and stuff.
Do you know what those stations would cost?
Yeah, they're like under two hundred bucks. So anywhere like, sort of the same kind of one that Ken's got down there. Like between one eighty-five and two hundred bucks. And it comes with a ton of bags, um, to begin with.
For two perks?
Huh?
For two bags?
Two perks, yeah. So we already have one in Harrison, so the other one would be Heritage and then Holloway.
There's only two of us.
Hmm?
That's just one of them.
What's the more?
Right.
I think that actually is county property.
Two thirds of it's county property. The other third is ours. So you mean here, here?
I have another question. So you wanna put one across in the market?
I'm setting it through, two and a half.
Okay. How about we put this on the agenda for the next meeting to take specific action?
All right, okay. Yes. Um, and then I have another question.
Mm-hmm.
So the head lights at the, um, like, the water tower with Christmas lights, um, when that goes offline, are we still gonna be able to light?